Ladies and gentlemen, may I have your attention please? We're going to start our procedures and to start it, I'm going to turn the ceremony over to Richard Delasola, who I know is very involved with you. So, Richard, if you would.
Ladies, good evening. Thanks for coming out here today. This is to honor Everett Public Honor Crimson Tide Public Honor Cheerleaders. National Champions, Level Four, went down to Disney this year. Congratulations. Around August, you girls all signed up, got together, the coaches saw what they had, and realized you were a talented team that were going to be put together. And when the coaches and the coordinators got together, and knew what kind of talent you could be if you worked hard during the season. And to go Level Four, for the first time, any cheerleading team from Everett went down to Disney World, and became National Champ, Level Four. Myself, my colleagues at City Council, congratulate you. I'm going to hand the mic over to our Mayor, Carlos D. Maria.
I too just want to offer my congratulations to the young ladies before me. I know how difficult it is to be a cheerleader, and how much, not because I was one, but you know, I may look like a cheerleader to you. But I know how much time and effort, and it's not just the season, it's all year long. Some of you belong to other programs, and it's a lot. And it's a lot on your parents, and your families, or your grandparents, whoever's taking care of you these days, it's a lot on them. And so, to go down and represent the city of Everett, and be recognized as the National Champions, you know, we all take a lot of pride in you. I mean, all of us here, the elected officials before me, myself, people in the city, whenever it does well, we all look good. And you are just a shining example of how good this city is. And again, I want to congratulate you. I wish so many good things for you. How many are you cheering next year again? Next year moving on to the A-Team? Or is this it? We're done? This is the last year? I thought this was the B-Team. Was this the B-Team?
Yeah.
Yes? So, is there no more A-Team? There is? Where no one's doing it? You've had enough? Well, good, good. Go out in style. So, yeah, you definitely went out in style by winning the National Championship. So, I'm going to call your names again, on behalf of the entire city of Everett, we're very proud of you. Just a little token of our appreciation, we have a citation. I will start with the coaches, so they're up here, to say hi to you as you walk to the front. We'll take a picture with the whole group here, and we'll get it in the newspaper recognizing your efforts. I know the Senator brought you up to the State House, the Senator and the Rep, so that must have been a great trip for you all to see that, to be in the nurses' hall and take a picture there. We're all so proud of you, we really are. And I know maybe some of you will be like, "All right, let's get this over with." But we are happy. You know, we don't have the opportunity sometimes to celebrate, and so we're celebrating with you. We got the news, of course, on Facebook, you know, some of your mothers, my wife is friends with some of your mothers, so right away I knew when you won. So, it was a great experience. A lot of people back in Everett were cheering for you. So, if I can have the dedicated coaches who do not get paid, who do this out of the goodness of their heart, so I'm going to invite up first, I would like the head coach. Where is she? Jenna Marchand. Jenna Marchand.
Jenna, congratulations, Jenna. I'm going to read the citation. "Be it here known to all, as our Mayor, Mayor Carlos D. Maria, offer my most sincere congratulations to head coach Jenna Marchand, in recognition of your dedication and hard work resulting in your being the 2015 National Champions. And I send my very best wishes on this memorable occasion, express the hope for continued good fortune given the 11th day of January 2016."
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Tiffany's not here?
No.
All right. How about Lisa Saccetta's here? No, Lisa isn't here either? Justine?
Yes.
Justine? Justine Doucet, the equipment manager. That must be a daunting task. Okay? That must mean they must have their bows, their equipment, their clothes, and shoes, and all that. So, Justine, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other? Coach? Head coach? Oh, no, head coach. We have one for the President of the Organization, Brian Diamond. Brian, come on up here. Brian, if I had known, I wouldn't have done one for you, but it's here, and I'm going to give it to you. No, just congratulations. Behind every good organization is a good leader. And Brian does a wonderful job for our kids in our city, and I thank Brian. Haley Seaward. Congratulations. Actually, you want to, Haley? Why don't you just line right up front? Actually, no, go right here, right here. Got it, girl. Kiana Ricketts. Congratulations. Lilly Pulsifer. Congratulations. Fatima Martinez. Chloe Lewis. Gillian Evola. Maial Laurent. Dinora Lana Verde. Isabella LaCorcia. Look like your mother, more and more. Daniela Bonilla Lopez. Michelle Bonilla. I think your father's mad at me when I said that, though. You look more like your mother. Ashley Yaba. Jasmine Nguyen. The name of the hotel after you pretty soon, Jasmine. Brianna Walker. Rosemary Bonilla. They twins? Congratulations. Alia Farante. Throw me off there with the two L's, the Alia. Alia, Alia Farante, right? It's Alia. Lauren Gilius. Is that right? No? Gilius? Lauren Gilius, sorry. Congratulations. Emily Iascioni. Paulina Strategas. Your father's probably mad at you for saying that wrong. Do I have any other kids out there? No. And I do have Lisa. Lisa Saccetta's here, and she's the assistant coach. Lisa, we have one for you also. I also want to make mention, I see Lisa Delasola in the audience, I don't know if Brenda Marchand's in the audience. Brenda? And I know that this wouldn't be possible without the two of them, and I hear it's their last year, so I want to thank you for many years, I don't know how many years, but I know it's well over a couple decades, of dedication to the girls and the city of Everett, and thank you to both of you for all that you've done for these young ladies. And if you wouldn't mind joining us for this picture, I would love to have you with us.
Girls that are shorter in the front.
We actually do want to do something right here. To the City Council members, I'm glad.
To pick a group I need to be back.
Everybody's fine, huh, Karen?
Everybody's fine.
I thought you were talking to me.
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 Hi, Richard.
Hi.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
It's been awhile.
I want to thank you guys and Senorius.
Hi, Mike.
Good.
How are you?
Good.
Doesn't this look familiar?
Always a pleasure to see you.
I got it all the time now. It's supposed to be off, right?
Yeah.
Clerk of Calhoun.
Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor Del Solo.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Mangan.
Here.
Counselor Matuski.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Palatano.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Ten members present, Mr. President.
Will the members in the audience please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a moment, please. There's some sad things to report. We have a Gloria LaSalle who has passed away, aunt of Richard Bannerwich who was our, one of our school committee people. Jacqueline Dumas whose parents are a friend of just about everybody on this, on the city council. And Maria Lopez who is a daughter of Suma Nazakia who we all know. So, hold on for a second. Thank you. Do we have anything on the sign up sheet for public participation?
Aye.
First, do first job.
Most in favor of public participation?
All in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Hold on for one second, please.
No sign up sheet for public participation?
None. Okay, I'll accept the motion to close.
Second.
Moving second to close public participation. All in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes opposed. Ayes have it. Clerk will read the first item.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, I do have a sign in sheet. If we could please take.
I think we're going to go a little bit fast so we don't even have to bother with that.
Okay.
Just going to go.
Item number.
Mr. President, if we could, I think I make a motion to take an items one through five collectively. Just have the clerk read the, who the donation is from, the amount, and then a letter of thanks be sent.
Second.
Second? Second, anyone?
Second motion.
Okay, moving second to take item one through five collectively. Letter to be sent to thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move the ayes have it. Clerk will please read the calendar.
Item number one is an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon as president to accept donation totaling $5,640 to support the Office of Human Services Emergency Services Donation Account as follows. Marjorie White for Co-op $5,000, Jack Condon $500, Everett Emblem Club, number 3200, Rachel Dacino $15, Benjamin Sya $25. Item number two is an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon as president to accept a donation of $15,000 from the Everett Foundation for Aged Persons Incorporated to support the Office of Human Services Elder Services Program and be deposited into the Elder Services Gift Account. Item number three is an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon as president to accept a donation of $250 to support the Council on Aging Programs and be deposited into the Council of Aging Gift Account from Mr. Steven Lawango. Item number four is an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon as president to accept a donation of $1,000 to support the Office of Human Services Emergency Services Program to be deposited into the Office of Human Services Donation Account from Holly Don New III Incorporated Duncan Donuts. Item number five is an order sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon as president to accept donation of $100 to the Everett Police Donation Account from Frederick Hafasman Sons Incorporated Funeral Home. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Solo.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I apologize for the interruption. If we could, could we take items six through 10 collectively? They're all petitions for the relicence at the lodging house.
Second motion. If you may, the second I have for the city, in the court that all is bearing on. They, it's no question, all in favor, take it collectively?
Aye.
Item number six, petition for a lodging house license from Andrew Philbin DBA, the Glendale 322-324 Ferry. Item number seven, petition for a lodging house license, Andrew Philbin DBA, 450 Ferry Street Trust at 450 Ferry Street. Item number eight, petition for a lodging house license, Andrew Philbin DBA, the Marlboro at 51 Chelsea Street. Item number nine, petition for a large house, lodging house license from Andrew Philbin DBA, the Newport at 59 Chelsea Street. Item number 10, petition for a large house license from Joseph Vestulo Trust, EDBA, J&amp;T Realty Trust at 312-314 Broadway.
Favorable action?
On the motion? Do we have any problems with these lodging homes? Any police reports, any?
Not the ones that are in front of us this evening. The police reports were less than a page on each.
Okay, thank you.
Mostly some medicals, some things like that.
Right, okay.
On the motion?
Thank you. Counselor McKinnon?
Through you, Mr. President, to the court. Is that on average, is that what we usually get? It's just a page and its medicals and stuff like that?
No, it has been in the, up until the last year. So if I may, Mr. President, they were pretty extensive through the last few years.
No, I, that's why I'm asking.
As you recall, two, three pages. In most cases, they've gone and, and, you know, really kind of reeled their places in.
So this is, this is declining then?
Yes.
All the calls.
Okay. Thank you very much. On the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You've, you've passed the petitions.
We have a roll call.
Roll call. I'm sorry.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Solo.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
You've passed the petition, thank you. Counselorman DeFlorio? Twelve.
Items 12 through 20 collectively, please.
Second. All in favor, take items 12 through 20 collectively, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So forth, the ayes have it. Clerk will read the agenda.
Item number 11 is petition for a first class motor deal license from Frank Vigorito, DBA Boston Freightliner at 3 Bow Street.
Favorable action, Mr. President? Second, anyone?
Second.
Second motion, second favorable action. All in favor?
Aye.
Answer the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Solo.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
You've passed the petition, thank you. Counselorman DeFlorio? 12.
Items 12 through 20 collectively, please.
Second. All in favor, take items 12 through 20 collectively, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So forth, the ayes have it. Clerk will read the agenda.
Item number 11 is petition for, I'm sorry, 12 is petition for second class motor deal license, Anthony Vigorito, DBA Vigor Diesel Injection at 50 Mystic. Item number 13, second class motor deal license from Frank Vigorito, DBA Vigor Diesel Injection at 3 Bow Street. Item number 14, petition for a second class motor deal license from Rocco Vigorito, DBA New England Body Works, 36 Mystic Street. Item number 15 is petition for second class motor deal license from Els and Alves, DBA Affordable Auto at 83 Vine Street. Item number 16, petition for a second class motor deal license from Gaperia Estrada, DBA D&amp;G Towing and Auto Repair Services, 45 Mystic Street. Item number 17, petition for a second class motor deal license for 380 Auto Finder, 380 Second Street. Item number 18, petition for a second class motor deal license, Boston Body, 141 Bow. Item number 19, is a second class motor deal license from Giuseppe, Giuliano, DBA Pepe's Auto Sales at 25 Bow Street. And now, number 20 is petition for a second class motor deal license from Luigi Asano, DBA European Auto Sales, 51 Second Street.
Chairman.
Yes, Counselor DeFlorio.
In regards to all these petitions, I just want to explain the reason why they're not on the license committee is because they're all renewals. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, the other question is, everything is in order?
Everything is in order.
Favorable action.
Okay, so favorable action on the others.
Okay, motion made, second favorable action. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Please answer the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Solo.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
You've passed the petition, thank you. Counselorman DeFlorio? 12.
Items 12 through 20 collectively, please.
Second. All in favor, take items 12 through 20 collectively, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So forth, the ayes have it. Clerk will read the agenda.
Item number 11 is petition for a first class motor deal license from Frank Vigorito, DBA Boston Freightliner at 3 Bow Street.
Favorable action, Mr. President? Second, anyone?
Second.
Second motion, second favorable action. All in favor?
Aye.
Answer the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Solo.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
You've passed the petition, thank you. Counselorman DeFlorio? 12.
Items 12 through 20 collectively, please.
Second. All in favor, take items 12 through 20 collectively, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So forth, the ayes have it. Clerk will read the agenda.
Item number 11 is petition for, I'm sorry, 12 is petition for second class motor deal license, Anthony Vigorito, DBA Vigor Diesel Injection at 50 Mystic. Item number 13, second class motor deal license from Frank Vigorito, DBA Vigor Diesel Injection at 3 Bow Street. Item number 14, petition for a second class motor deal license from Rocco Vigorito, DBA New England Body Works, 36 Mystic Street. Item number 15 is petition for a second class motor deal license from Els and Alves, DBA Affordable Auto at 83 Vine Street. Item number 16, petition for a second class motor deal license from Gaperia Estrada, DBA D&amp;G Towing and Auto Repair Services, 45 Mystic Street. Item number 17, petition for a second class motor deal license for 380 Auto Finder, 380 Second Street. Item number 18, petition for a second class motor deal license, Boston Body, 141 Bow. Item number 19, is a second class motor deal license from Giuseppe, Giuliano, DBA Pepe's Auto Sales at 25 Bow Street. And now, number 20 is petition for a second class motor deal license from Luigi Asano, DBA European Auto Sales, 511 Second Street.
Chairman.
Yes, Counselor DeFlorio.
In regards to all these petitions, I just want to explain the reason why they're not on the license committee is because they're all renewals. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, the other question is, everything is in order?
Everything is in order.
Favorable action.
Okay, so favorable action on the others.
Okay, motion made, second favorable action. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Please answer the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Solo.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yeas, zero, there you have you. Granted all the petitions. Clerk will read item number 21.
Item 21, communication order from Counselor John F. Hanlon as president from the Charter Review Committee requesting reauthorization of the committee's mission for the time necessary to complete a comprehensive review of the Everett Home Rule Charter.
Counselor Palatano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this, I'm a member of this committee. We were appointed by, by Counselorman Capone last year during last session. The charter requires a comprehensive review and, you know, we had a few delays because we were missing members throughout the summer. But we've, we're actually hitting a pretty good stride. We're making great progress. The feeling of the committee is that we would like to continue so we can complete the job and be able to present a positive review. So I am asking the body consider, consider reauthorizing the committee to continue with its role. Okay, so I'm requesting favorable action on this.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
On the motion, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, excuse me. Do we need to have two new members of the committee appointed Counselor Palatano? Did I read that this week?
That would be up to, if I, if I could through the chair, I believe that would be up to the council president.
But progress can continue?
Sorry.
My only question is, can progress continue on the committee if the two new members are not appointed in a rapid period of time?
Progress will always continue. You know, just new members come on, is that what you mean?
Right. I just want to make sure that there's enough members to keep this committee going so that we can get a favorable recommendation.
Well, we've got enough members now.
Okay.
Enough members that are attending, so that's, that's pretty good.
Yeah, if, if I could clear it for the, for the public, Mr. Chairman. Right, the, there's only two members of the city council that are a member of this, this committee. The, the council president then appoints an additional two, I believe? All I only refer is because you were in that position last, yeah, I do. I apologize for the crosstalk, but I don't have all the information. But the remaining members were, were, are appointed by the mayor's office and that's where we were missing people. Right now, we do have, we've been able to hold a quorum for the last four months. We've made a lot of progress. We've made more progress in the last four months than we've been able to do in the last six. So, you know, we'd like to continue and do the job right.
Counselorman McKinnon?
I get it clear. We're just waiting on two more appointments that we needed? Or we're not waiting? We're just continuing on? But there's two more appointments that need to be done by whom? The mayor's office?
By the mayor's office. We have, we have enough to continue on with a quorum. That's the whole thing, to have a quorum.
Yes.
And if we've got that, we, we can go, you know? So that's what, that's what we're waiting for.
Will there be two more appointments or?
We hope so.
Okay.
We hope so, but if not, we could continue right on.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Counselor Matuski?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, when the charter was voted on, it seemed like it was a cut deal and now all of a sudden they're tweaking it and so forth. But, you know, I hope they tweak it in the right areas. For instance, there's been a question on what 20% actually means. Is it the total vote of the city? How many members are on this board? I mean, the last time there was a gentleman here, he said they didn't even, that was only, I wasn't on the council last year. But according to him, if my memory serves me right, I watched on our TV, he said they didn't even have enough members to hold a meeting and nobody was showing up. So, I'm hearing something different tonight. I want to know how many members are on that? And, you know, I think it's great the city councilmen have the time to serve in this committee, but it seems like we're going to have some vacancies created at City Hall pretty soon. It's what I'm hearing, I just found this out Friday. What special elections are going to recur and this and that. And we all know what I'm talking about. And the other thing I have a question on is, and it's been said to me many times, that district councilmen should be voted within their district. We are the only city in this state, Mr. President, that has district councilmen who voted citywide. Now, you know, I have a problem with that and it's, it's, it's expensive to run for office. You know, district councilmen are required to run citywide. These are questions that I don't know if this charter review committee is going to look at. I don't know who's on it and I don't know who is going to be appointing people, but, you know, if there's 11 members, who are they? I don't know. If Mr. Palatano's on it, that's fine. That's one member and the gentleman that was here a few months ago. Maybe the city clerk can tell me who's on the, who's on this committee and it seems to me that maybe they should have elected a charter review committee rather than appoint them. I mean, you know, and, there's just so many, and these are just a few of the questions I have.
Counselor, if, if I could, I know what you're saying and everything, but the fact that the committee is meeting is in the charter itself. The charter itself calls for this, this group to be made. And not only that, it requires it to be called every 10 years. So after we do do this in, I think, 2024, it'll, it'll come to life again.
Excuse me, what happens in 10 years?
Yes.
What happens in 10 years? I, I missed that.
Another, another whole committee. I mean, this committee will, will finish its job and then in, in 10 years, in 2024, it has to be done over again. Brand new members, brand, to, to review the charter. The charter is going to be reviewed by our charter every 10 years.
Well, my question is, Mr. President, are we going to wait eight more years to fix things?
Working on it now.
Oh, so you can change things that are in this charter?
No. Some things we can change, but we can't change it. The board has to change it. We can only make a recommendation.
Wait a second, Mr. President. I'm not getting this correct, Mr. President. Maybe the clerk, you seem to be a little perplexed here also. The people on the charter review committee are going to change the charter?
No. They can make a recommendation to this board.
To this board?
To change it.
Okay, well, that makes a little more sense. But, you know, there are some questions. I know that the people voted for it and as it turns out, it's probably the best thing that ever happened to city government to have less members up here. But the truth of the matter is, you know, I want to know who's on that committee. Can the clerk of, Mr. Monterazzo, get that information and when they expire? Is that okay to request that?
Yeah, it's David Flood, Andrew DeLaurie, John F. Hanlon, Peterina Palatano, L. Charles DePerry, Lawrence Aronello, and Jeanne Cristiano.
Can you put that in their paper form and just give it to Ms. McCary for me? Thank you.
Counselor McKinnon?
If I may.
No.
They cannot, what they can change and what they cannot change is strictly spelled out in the charter. They cannot change how city councils are elected, the charter review committee. That was.
Second.
Second motion, second favorable action. All in favor?
Aye.
Answer the roll.
Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Delasola.
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio. Councilor DePiero.
Yes.
Councilor Mangan. Councilor Matuzki.
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon.
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Politano.
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli. Councilor Hanlon.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
You've passed the petition. Thank you. Councilman, uh, DeFlorio?
Twelve. Items twelve through twenty collectively, please.
Second.
Motion second, take items twelve through twenty collectively. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. The ayes have it. Clerk will read the agenda.
Item number eleven is petition for, I'm sorry, twelve is petition for second-class motor deal license Anthony Vigorito DBA Vigor Diesel Injection at fifty Mystic. Item number thirteen, second-class motor deal license from Frank Vigorito DBA Vigor Diesel Injection at three Bow Street. Item number fourteen, petition for a second-class motor deal license from Rocco Vigorito DBA New England Body Works thirty-six Mystic Street. Item number fifteen is petition for second-class motor deal license from Els and Alves DBA Affordable Auto at eighty-three Vine Street. Item number sixteen, petition for a second-class motor deal license from Gaperia Estrada DBA D and G Towing and Auto Repair Services forty-five Mystic Street. Item number seventeen, petition for a second-class motor deal license for three eighty Auto Finder, three eighty Second Street. Item number eighteen, petition for a second-class motor deal license Boston Body, one forty-one Bow. Item number nineteen, petition for second-class motor deal license from Giuseppe, uh, Ju- yeah, Giuliano DBA Pepe's Auto Sales at twenty-five Bow Street. And now, number twenty, petition for a second-class motor deal license from Luigi Asano DBA European Auto Sales, five eleven Second Street.
Chairman.
Yes, Councilor DeFlorio.
In regards to all these petitions, I just want to explain the reason why they're not on the License Committee is because they're all renewals. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, the other question is, everything is in order?
Everything is in order.
Fable action.
Okay, so favorable action on the orders.
Okay, motion made, second favorable action. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Please answer the roll.
Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Delasola.
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Councilor DePiero.
Yes.
Councilor Mangan.
Yes.
Councilor Matuzki.
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon.
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Politano.
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli. Councilor Hanlon.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eleven yeas, zero nays. Have you granted all the petitions? Clerk will read item number twenty-one.
Item twenty-one, communication order from Councilor John F. Hanlon, Mr. President, from the Charter Review Committee requesting reauthorization of the committee's mission for the time necessary to complete a comprehensive review of the Everett Home Rule Charter.
Councilor Politano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, this is, I'm a member of this committee. Uh, we were appointed by, uh, by Councilman Capone, uh, last year during the last session. Uh, the charter requires a comprehensive review and, um, you know, we had a few delays because we were missing members throughout the summer, but we've, um, we're actually hitting a pretty good stride. We're making great progress. The feeling of the committee is that we would like to continue so we can complete the job and be able to present a, a, a positive review. So I am asking the body consider, uh, sort of reauthorizing the committee to continue with its role. Okay, so I'm requesting favorable action on this.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
On the motion, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, excuse me, do we need to have two new members of the committee appointing Councilor Politano? Did I read that this week?
Uh, that would be up to, if I, if I could through the chair, I believe that would be up to the, uh, Council President.
But progress can continue?
Sorry.
My only question is, can progress continue on the committee if the two new members are not appointed in a rapid period of time?
Progress will always continue. You know, just new members come on. Is that what you mean?
Right. I just want to make sure that there's enough members to keep this committee going so that we can get a favorable recommendation.
Well, we've got enough members now.
Okay.
And enough members that are attending, so that's, that's pretty good.
Yeah, if, if I could clear it for the pa- for the public, Mr. Chairman, right, the, uh, there's only two members of the city council that are a member of this, this, uh, committee. Uh, the, the, the Council President then appoints an additional two, I believe? Uh, I only refer us because you were in that position last, yeah, I do. I apologize for the crosstalk, but I don't have all the information. But the remaining members were, were, are appointed by the mayor's office, and that's where we were missing people. Right now, we do have a, uh, we've been able to hold a quorum for the last four months. We've made a lot of pro- we've made more progress in the last four months than we've been able to do in the last six. So, you know, we'd like to continue and do the job right.
Councilman McKinnon.
I get it clear. Um, we're just waiting on two more appointments that we needed? Or, or we're not waiting?
No.
We're just continuing on? But there's two more appointments that need to be done by whom? The mayor's office?
By the mayor's office. We have, we have enough to continue on with a quorum. That's the whole thing, to have a quorum.
Yes.
And if we've got that, we, we can go, you know, uh, so that's what, that's what we're waiting for.
Will there be two more appointments, or?
We hope so.
Okay.
We hope so, but if not, we could continue right on. All right?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Councilor Matuzki?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, you know, when the charter was voted on, uh, it seemed like it was a cut deal, and, uh, now all of a sudden they're tweaking it and so forth, but, you know, I hope they tweak it in the right areas. Uh, for instance, uh, there's been a question on what twenty percent actually means. Is it the total vote of the city? Uh, how many members are on this board? I mean, the last time there was a gentleman here, he said they didn't even, that was only, I wasn't on the council, uh, last year, but according to him, if my memory serves me right, I watched on our TV, he said they didn't even have enough members to hold a meeting, and nobody was showing up. So I'm hearing something different tonight. I want to know how many members are on that, and, uh, you know, I think it's great the city councilmen have the time to serve in this committee, but it seems like, uh, we're gonna have some vacancies created at City Hall pretty soon. It's what I'm hearing. I just found this out Friday. Uh, what special elections are gonna recur and this and that. And we all know what I'm talking about. And the other thing I have a question on is, and it's been said to me many times, that, um, district councilmen should be voted within their district. We are the only city in this state, Mr. President, that has district councilmen to vote citywide. Now, you know, I have a problem with that, and, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's expensive to run for office. You know, uh, district councilmen are required to run citywide. These are questions that I don't know if this Charter Review Committee is gonna look at. I don't know who's on it, and I don't know who, uh, is gonna be appointing people, but, uh, you know, I, if there's eleven members, who are they? I don't know. If Mr. Politano's on it, that's fine. That's one member, and the gentleman that was here a few months ago. Maybe the city clerk can tell me who's on the, who's on this committee, and, uh, it seems to me that, uh, maybe they should have elected a Charter Review Committee rather than appoint them. I mean, you know, and, uh, there's just so many, and these are just a few of the questions I have.
Councilman, if, if I could, I know what you're saying and everything, but the fact that the committee is meeting is in the charter itself.
Oh, whatever, okay.
Calls for this, this group to be made, and not only that, it requires it to be called every ten years. So after we, do do this in, uh, I think, two thousand twenty-four, it'll, it'll come to life again, and...
Uh, excuse me, what happens in ten years?
Yes.
What happens in ten years? I, I missed that.
Another, another whole committee. I mean, this committee will, will finish its job, and then in, uh, in ten years, in two thousand twenty-four, it has to be done over again. Brand-new members, brand, to, to review the charter. The charter's gonna be reviewed by our charter every ten years.
Well, my question is, Mr. President, uh, are we gonna wait eight more years to fix things?
Working on it now.
Oh, so you can change things that are in this charter?
No. Some things we can change, but we can't change it. The board has to change. We can only make a recommendation.
Wait a second, Mr. President. I'm not getting this correct, Mr. President. Maybe the clerk, uh, you seem to be a little perplexed here also. The people on the Charter Review Committee are gonna change the charter?
No.
No.
They can make a recommendation to this board.
To this board?
To change it.
Okay, well, that makes a little more sense. But, uh, you know, there are some questions. I know that, uh, the people voted for it, and as it turns out, it's probably the best thing that ever happened to city government, to have less members up here. But the truth of the matter is, uh, you know, I want to know who's on that committee. Can the clerk of, uh, Mr. Monterazzo get that information and when they expire? Is that okay to request that?
Yeah, it's, uh, David Flood, Andrew DeLore, John F. Hanlon, Peterina Politano, L. Charles DePerry, Lawrence Aronello, and Jeanie Cristiano.
Can you put that in their paper form and just give it to Ms. McCary for me?
Sure.
Thank you.
One thing they cannot change, if I may.
No.
They cannot, the, the, what they can change and what they cannot change is strictly, uh, spelled out in the charter. They cannot change how city councils are elected, the Charter Review Committee. That would take a whole new charter thing, exactly like happened last time. So they cannot change that. They cannot change the length of a term. They cannot change the number of counselors or how they're elected. That's one thing that's in, they are not allowed to, uh, under the charter. So that's one of the things they can't do.
Councilman McKinnon?
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna touch on that. What he just touched on was the, anything of major concern or major, you know, consequence within the charter, it would have to go before the people again. It would have to go on to a new, separate, like, vote in November, and then you would have to have them vote on if they wanted to change that item or not. So, uh, maybe that would be, it, maybe there's a mechanism to where, I, I can understand Councilor Matuzki's frustration or, uh, you know, applause for it, but I can also say that there should be a mechanism where we, as the council out here, could actually have some input within that, uh...
You do.
And I know, we do. But what we're going to do is, I mean, he didn't know what the avenues were for that, so now he does. So maybe we can get that done.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Politano?
Uh, I'm all set. I think it's been clarified in the...
Any further discussion on the motion?
Let's take the vote. We have a, uh, favorable action in the second roll call.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Accept the communication.
Fable action on the order.
And, um...
On the order, Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor Delasola.
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Councilor DePiero.
Yes.
Councilor Mangan. Councilor Matuzki.
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon.
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Politano.
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli. Councilor Hanlon.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Ten yeas, you accept the communications and you've passed the order. Clerk will read item number twenty-two.
Item number twenty-two is a resolution sponsored by Councilor Anthony DePiero that may consider stopping the V.A.R. report. Made up by community leaders with the focus of exploring what other cities and towns are doing to tackle the opioid epidemic and make suggestions that will allow us to fight addiction smartly and proactively.
Yes. Councilor?
Uh, through you, Mr. President, to my colleagues. Uh, my intent with this piece is, as we all know, what opiate addiction's doing to, to cities all over the country. It's, you know, it's not just the homeless person on the corner. It's mothers, fathers, uh, children, and, um, it's not about reinventing the wheel, seeing what programs work. Let's see what other cities and towns are doing, uh, seeing what works and implementing it here. But what I'm actually going to do is, um, I'm gonna refer this back to sponsor because I'd like to change it to an order on the next meeting, and I'd like to change the wording. Instead of referring it to the mayor, I'd like the council to look into establishing a special committee because under Rule thirty-eight, we're able to do that. So if anyone else would like to talk on it.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I commend our new young counselor for doing this. It's very well needed, and I think this is a great piece. I would love to go on it, and it's good to have some young people with us to help us out with this addiction and to make us understand it and move forward to try to help, uh, all these poor people that have been hit, uh, whether it's through death, whether it's through addiction that they are now. Hopefully, we can help. Thank you.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
I also would like to congratulate my colleague from Ward Three. I think this is a much-needed piece of business that needs to go forward, and I think we need to, as a body, work together to be able to move this forward as rapidly as we can, to, uh, to try to start working on finding some solutions. Unfortunately, we're seeing cases day in and day out throughout our community that are being affected by this opiate crisis that has hit in our community. I had just seen a study last week done in Fox, um, Channel Five News that had us listed in the top ten or so of, of communities across the state that are dealing with the opiate crisis, serious issue. Um, I also would love to support this and put my name on this and applaud my colleague from Ward Three for putting this forward tonight.
Councilor DePerry? DePiero?
I also want to mention one more thing. If, uh, nobody's aware, the city's gonna be receiving, I believe, twenty thousand dollars from the state, uh, which is gonna be available for the purchase and use of Narcan in the community, so I wanted to point that out. What was that? Yeah, twenty thousand dollars and, uh, some kind of grant to the state. And I also want to just comment, if anyone would like to jump on the piece and add their name to it, please contact me before, um, the next meeting.
I'll second the motion, Mr. ...
Okay, so the motion was to, uh, refer it back to sponsor for reintroduction. Okay, and we have a second on it. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. We have referred it back to sponsor. Item twenty-three.
Item twenty-three, resolution sponsored by Councilor Anthony DePiero. City consider installing a barrier along the section of the Horseman Playground parking lot that is adjacent to Foster Street as a safety precaution.
Councilor DePiero?
I bring this up because, uh, when I was in the neighborhood a few months ago, a few residents had concerns that in the past, there have been accidents where cars have gone over the side and have hung on to the sidewalk and have caused a major safety concern. I know that there's currently work being done, uh, to the playground, and if the city considers installing some kind of barrier to prevent that kind of thing from happening.
Councilor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I commend my, uh, colleague on this piece as well. Being on the area, we're all on the campaign trail. Uh, this is something that, uh, that we're aware of happening at the end of July. Very dangerous situation, uh, potentially life-threatening. It continues. Um, residents in the area did ask for it. It's something that was related to the administration. I did so. So now that there are more voices involved, I hope, I hope we get some action on this. I know that they're doing work at the Taunt Lot, but the section of fence was repaired, and there is, the section of stone has been missing since the accident, has not been replaced. We really need to put something there before someone loses their life. So I commend you on the piece, and I second it.
Okay. The motion was?
Uh, to refer to city services and the city engineer's office.
Motion was to refer to city services and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have referred...
Can I also add to have an answer back in a few weeks, uh, if there's plans in the current proposal at the next meeting?
And to consider referring it back to us, uh, to returning to us within a two-week period.
Item twenty-four, resolution sponsored by Councilor Michael J. McGlaughlin, Councilor Richard Delasola, and Councilor John F. Hanlon to look into cost of adding both lighting and cameras along the bike path to increase public safety and easier access for public use. Also to request how often, if at all, our police department monitors this area each evening?
Councilor McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, unfortunately, we have just seen a recent serious issue down at the bike path with some, uh, misbehavior happening on the bike path. Um, there was a murder down there last weekend, as most of us know from the news. Uh, I, I travel that area quite often and have some friends that walk that bike path every night. Um, and I think that trying to put some lights down there will get more people to start utilizing that area. We'll feel more comfortable to be down there at the bike path at nighttime, and I think that adding cameras to that area will also help us in detering any, uh, negative behavior that is occurring down at that bike path. I'm not sure if our police department is going down there at all. I'm not even sure if there's an access to be able to drive onto the bike path, uh, but I'm not sure if they're going down there at all at nighttime, trying to monitor that issue and trying to move along people that may be not down there that we don't want down there. Uh, so there are some issues and concerns that I have as the area counselor on, on the bike path that I think that needs to be further looked into. Um, that's the reason I put this forward tonight, um, and I would like to, wanna send this to committee, uh, if I, I'll open up, if any of my colleagues want to speak on it, but I think it is a real public safety issue at this point down there.
Councilor Delasola?
Yes, th- this is an issue. Like my colleague said, we had an issue there a few weeks ago. Uh, the lighting up there, I think would benefit even the businesses along that area. Uh, there's big businesses along the bike path. If we have lighting on the building of the bike path, it would benefit the businesses who were there if anybody tries to break into their own business itself. But my main concern is the, it's nonstop to people. I'm surprised how many people use that bike path, and I'd be afraid to walk down the bike path itself. And also, I like to put on this piece about cleaning the edges up of the bike path. I've, I've gone through Malden, and you go down there, Mass Electric, and you look down, it's all nice grass, and it's wide open. But I think when you come into Everett, the overgrown weeds and vines and trees are kinda jamming the bike path that, God forbid, someone's ever hiding in there, and it bothers some of the children that walk through there, or the parents, trying to get home at the end of the day. It gets dark so early now, five o'clock, it's dark out, and it, it is dangerous. So this is a great piece for everybody in the surrounding cities.
Motion was to refer to the government operations?
I'd like to, I, I would like to just say that Mayor DiMarie, or I know Mayor DiMarie and Chief, the chief of police have started to look at this item since the recent murder down that area. I'd like to send this to committee, the government operations committee, inviting chief of police and the mayor's office to discuss this matter with us further.
Okay. Second. Motion was to refer to government operations, inviting the mayor and the chief of police. Um, and also, I was just thinking while you were doing that, uh, counselor, that you might want to check on the other cities and towns that have this bike path because it's a containment path. If anyone else has it, maybe establish something for lights along the whole area, if you would want to do that.
Absolutely. I will do some homework on that in the next two weeks.
All in favor of the referral?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Item, clerk read item twenty-five.
Item twenty-five, resolution sponsored by Councilor Rosa DeFlorio and Councilor Michael McGlaughlin to invite members of City Engineering Department to discuss work being done on the industry by, uh, Department of Public Works.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my constituents on Linden Street have waited a long time for this, and they're very happy in what the city is doing by widening the street because there's a lot of accidents for public safety reasons. But I know the work got started, and I know why it was delayed. It was delayed because of National Grid not being able to,
Right.
to move the poles. And I apologize to the, uh, my constituents on, uh, Linden Street. But they also, we also want to know what's gonna happen right now with that hole being there when it snows. Uh, there's a, there's a problem. Is it gonna get backfilled? Is it gonna be hot-topped temporarily to make it safety? Uh, so I think, instead of sending this to committee, I believe that if they can give us an answer in two weeks, it would be sufficient. Uh, that's all we're looking for, to see what they're gonna be doing with that sidewalk that's opened up. Uh, are they gonna fill it with sand, uh, something? Uh, hot-topped temporarily from now until the spring, because I know they can't pour cement at this time.
Okay, so referral to the City Engineering Department?
Uh, city services and the city engineer department and give us an answer back in two weeks.
Okay. Uh, Councilor McGlaughlin?
Mr. President, again, I, I concur with my counsel from Ward Five. Um, I, I am in kind of awe, though, that we would start this type of work the first week of December. I'm not really sure who would make a decision to have our city workers go out there the first week of December and start ripping up sidewalks. I'm not sure that our city guys are even capable of being able to do this much of a, of a stretch of sidewalks, which is about a hundred and fifty feet, linear feet of sidewalks. I think there's some serious issues that need to be answered on who allowed this to go forward at this time of the year. I believe there's maybe possibly some drainage issues as well going on at that area. Um, I think that we need to have the city engineer and maybe DPW Director or Operations Manager come before us and just explain to us how they come to conclusion of starting something like this when they know that it may be nice yesterday, but tomorrow, we could get hit with a foot of snow and the whole entire circumstances change. Um, I, I really question whether or not this was a good idea from the beginning, and would like to ask, uh, city engineer and DPW to come before us to answer these questions on this item.
Counselor, uh, I'm sorry, Rosa, uh, Councilor DeFlorio, was that to refer to the committee and invite the, uh, people there?
I believe that in two weeks, we can get the answers right here because our constituents want to hear about this.
So you don't want to send it to committee?
No.
No.
Motion to lay on the table and to invite the...
We know the questions. We know that we, all we want is answers to the questions. There's no such as going to committee, then it comes back on the floor, and we have to ask the same questions again. So I don't believe this belongs in committee. It's a simple question, and that's all there is to it. So my recommendation is that we have the city engineer, somebody from the mayor's office come here in two weeks with the answers on the questions we have just asked. Thank you.
Okay, and that was seconded. Yes. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Tabled. Item, clerk read item twenty-six.
Item number six, right, twenty-six, resolution sponsored by Councilor Michael McGlaughlin, Councilor John Lee McKinnon, therefore representative from National Grid, come speak regarding work done on Ferry Street.
Councilor McGlaughlin?
Again, Mr. President, thank you. Again, this is another, what I would consider to be a poor decision to allow a project of this magnitude to, to start in December, in the winter months, especially allowing it to go on at nighttime. I think that if you have a small project, a week, two weeks' worth of work, and you may need a night here or there to get something accomplished, that's one reasonable request. But to allow a project to be done from seven P.M. to seven A.M., from start to finish, is unreasonable. The neighbors down there, I've got several phone calls from constituents in that area that are negatively being impacted at, in the evening. I was, uh, I was out one night last weekend. I got a phone call at nine-thirty at night. I couldn't even hear the constituent on the phone. The noise from outside of her home was so loud. They're jackhammering, cutting concrete, doing all sorts of gas work. I think that a project of this magnitude should have been done in the summer months when there's less traffic. During the day, the traffic wouldn't have been as negatively impacted, and I know the residents wouldn't have been as negatively impacted. For this to have been given, granted permission to go forward was, in my opinion, a bad decision. And I'd like to, again, know who's making these decisions. Who's allowing these projects to go forward without really giving a lot of thought? Because we have the winter months here. If we put road plates on the road, and a snowplow driver hits that road plate because they can't see a road plate under an inch or two inches of snow, I can assure you that it's gonna do some serious damage to, to a plow driver or to a truck that may be plowing Ferry Street for our city. It's a public safety issue, and I think it needs to be addressed a lot sooner than the committee can handle it, and that's why Councilor McKinnon and I put this forward for public safety and to really see if we can get this work under control, because I think it's out of control at this point.
Councilman McKinnon?
Uh, I concur with my colleague. Um, I'd like to see the, what do we want? The engineer up and also, um, let me see, anybody from DPW and also, uh, National Grid, so they can answer a couple of questions here as well. Uh, we want to find out some answers why this is occurring, and we don't want this occurring all through the city. So if we could do that, I, I refer back to my colleague. If you could put that in form of motion.
You have asked him to appear here?
Yes.
I would, I would like to ask that we, we have laid this over for two weeks, inviting up the city engineer, the DPW Director or Operations Manager, somebody from National Grid to discuss this issue, and at the same time, ask if there is a possibility of sending a, a notice to the contractor to see if we can get some of the noise to slow down a little bit during the night while these, while we wait the two weeks for this to go forward, uh, because it is negatively impacting a big, large constituency group in our community.
Motion is to table this for the period of two weeks, invite, sorry, Councilor DePiero. Did you ask a question on this? I'm sorry, I missed you. Go ahead, please.
Uh, I also have some questions, too. I received a, a phone call from a resident down at Ward Four, and, um, they complained that they were cutting concrete around midnight. I understand that a lot of the work needs to be done, but if, uh, I'd like to know if there are any kind of restrictions or if they would consider, you know, if you have to do something loud, do it at the beginning of the night, and just like some answers. So, thank you.
Counselor Delasola?
I just want to voice my opinion on this. This is my line of work. I do this every day. What happens here is, if we loud them in the city, National Grid's gonna come in, you know. And we have other streets beside this, uh, being done during the winter also. Lexington Street, uh, Woodlawn Street, they're doing test holes, so I'm just shocked. I know the division I'm in, Cambridge and Somerville, we're done for the winter. April first, we come back, maybe the end of March. But I definitely, I'll save all my questions and my comments in two weeks when the representatives come up to speak about this. Thank you.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want some of the new counselors to understand that that any questions they have for the department heads, according to the new charter, you have to give them to the department heads ahead of time, so, in writing.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay, just so they know, you know, for the, for the new council members, so that the people come up here prepared to answer the questions. Thank you.
Okay. Council McGlaughlin?
On the motion, I, I would like to, to thank my councillor from Ward Five, but I have already done that, I've already written out the questions this evening and have them ready to be submitted for enough appropriation of time to be able to have the questions answered, so I would like to thank her for bringing that to my attention, but I have already done so, and this evening I will be submitting at the end of the meeting my questions for each of the departments.
Okay, on the motion, the motion, let me just, wait, hold on, I want to just repeat this to make sure we get it all. The motion was refer this to the next, next meeting of the council, invite the Department of Public Works, invite the National Grid, invite the City Engineer, and also to send a notice to the contractor, ask him if, if they could abate some of the noise that's been going on now during the evening time. Is that the whole thing? Okay, Council McKinnon?
Yeah, just to make sure that they come, that, that's another item, because sometimes these, certain individuals do not show up, and then we're stuck, and we have to hold it over to another meeting, so I don't know whether it be certified mail, or what we have to do here to make sure that certain individuals come, that's what I want to do, okay? So, if we could do that, that would be a
Want it by certified mail?
Great accomplishment if we could do that.
You want it by certified mail, correct? Okay, so in addition to that, it was to be, notices to be sent out by certified mail. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Item number twenty-seven.
Item twenty-seven, resolution sponsored by Council Frank Capone, that City Services and City Engineer provide information regarding flooding concerns on Cottage Street behind Park Plaza in the culvert area of Spring Street. Additionally, it is requested all other known areas of frequent flooding throughout the city be identified, that information as to what steps have been taken or will be taken to address these issues be provided.
Council Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. You may recall that this is a piece that they put on our last session, we ran out of time, it was sent to a committee of the whole, I don't know if there is enough interest from the members to send it to a committee again, or if you want to just send it into Government Operations. Either way is fine with me, but I know that some of my colleagues have been dealing with flooding issues for a long time, I know the culvert area has been a nightmare for a long time, the difficulty there is that you have multiple parties, and that makes things tricky. Cottage Street, when you get a good flow of water, you put a canoe down that street, and I'm sure that there are other locations around the city that we need to look at, you know, Water Zav has been in the area where there's been some flooding, so I'm open to a committee of the whole, if that's the will of the body, or we could send it to Government Operations, either is fine with me, maybe a show of hands, if you, if you think there's enough interest to put it to committee whole, we could do that, but...
Whatever, whatever you want, whatever they want.
Me, huh?
I see, I see some heads shaking, but no one's saying anything, is it?
Then I would, I would suggest, I would second, um, Council Capone's motion, if it is a committee...
Committee of the whole, okay.
And then we would, requesting representative from City Services, representative from the mayor's office, and a representative from the engineer's office to attend.
Any further discussion? Motion is to refer this to the committee of the whole, invite the City Services, the mayor, and the Engineering Department. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have referred. Clerk read item twenty-eight.
Item twenty-eight, resolution sponsored by Council Frank Capone, that the mayor and the police chief consider opportunities to increase police visibility throughout the city such as substations in the squares and offices on bicycles.
Council Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, the police department is very busy in the city, and they do do a very good job, but one of the concerns that was raised by a number of our constituents is they'd like to see more visibility, they'd like to see the potential of some sort of a substation or something in our various squares, and they'd like to see a little bit more interaction on the sidewalks with residents, so that people would have even more feeling of safety. So, I would request that we refer this to Government Operations, Public Safety, invite representative from the mayor's office and the police chief.
And who, and who?
The police chief.
Councilman McKinnon?
Yeah, through you, Mr. President, to my colleague. I, I know that they've been stepping up some, some presence, we'll say, in both squares, as well as other various spots, hotspots, they also have a hotspot analyst that they utilize, too, maybe we should have the analyst come as well, describe a certain portions, or maybe the chief can do that as well, but we're paying some very good money for that analyst, too, there are different hotspots that we have, I know, and I know that they've been stepping up patrols, they've been stepping up, you know, visibility, but we need to probably do a little bit more and see where the hotspots would be, if that would be feasible.
Okay.
So, if we could just add the analyst as well.
Pad?
If we could add that analyst as well.
Second motion on that, amended to invite the analyst as well, to the committee meeting.
Which, who was that?
It's an analyst, it's a crime analyst, basically.
From the police department?
Yes.
Motion was to refer to Government Operations, invite the mayor, the police chief, and the crime analyst officer? Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all will answer in favor or signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Item twenty-nine, resolution sponsored by Council Frank Capone, that a representative of the assessors' office appeared to discuss the current tax classification system utilized by the city of Everett.
Council Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Likewise, I'd like to refer this to Government Operations, I know we've done numerous types of tax classifications over the years, at one point, we had industrial, commercial, and residential, I'm not sure why we, we did away with it, but I'd like to take a look at our tax structure, see if there's anything we should, we could do to help more evenly distribute the, the tax burden. I don't think that a company, that a small mom-and-pop store, sub shop, bobby shop, should be paying the same level of taxes as a multimillion-dollar corporation, or a large business that's bringing in quite a bit of revenues, so I would like to refer this to Government Operations, invite a representative from the mayor's office, and someone from the assessors' office.
Motion made in second, refer the subject matter to the Government Operations, invite the mayor and someone from the assessors' office, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved, we have referred. Item number thirty.
Item number thirty, resolution sponsored by Council Richard Delasola and Council Michael J. McGlaughlin, to get an update on the Water Zav project from City Engineer.
Council Delasola?
Yes, I've been down there a few times, this week and last week, I drove by with all the rain yesterday, and it's not getting better down there, so I'm not gonna get into it right now, but the next meeting, I'd like to, City Engineer, and also the representative of the contractor who's down there doing the work itself, because I see, they still got a, the hose pumping in a catch basin in front of the G E, the old G E entranceway, which I thought was illegal, we talked about that a while back, and it's still being pumped, so I'm just concerned about, when this is all done, those pumps are gone, now what's gonna happen down there? And now they're talking about adding more units down there to the left of Water Zav, so this is gonna get worse before it gets better, so I'll let my colleague talk on this and see what he has to have more input.
Council McGlaughlin? Councilman McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm not new, obviously, to the area, but I do, I do want to say that former councillors should try to work hard on this issue before leaving last year, I hope to be able to pick up the ball and carry it, we have a lot of issues down that area with this development, we have, as Council Delasola said, a line running along Tremont Street.
I'll call you back, I'm at a meeting.
Sorry, Mr. President.
Sorry.
We have a line running down Tremont Street, parallel to Tremont Street, that is blocking driveway aprons, that people can't get in and out of their driveways on businesses, when the water is flowing down the line, because the, the pump opens up so wide of a, of a line, that you can't drive over, Jakira's bottoming out, that's a, that's a concern, that's a concern that there's extra hoses laying all over the sidewalks down there, not being attached to anything, there's just extra hoses and so forth laying down there. They've cut the roadway at the corner of Tremont Street and Elton Street almost in half, they've taken one lane of traffic down there, and put a temporary fence up, and have a, currently a street sweep sitting at the corner there, if we have a plow or an emergency down there with a fire truck, whatever, as we've seen a fire on Prescott Street just on New Year's Day, those are concerns that, do we have accessibility to be able to get emergency personnel into that neighborhood if we need to be able to do so with that fence? In the back, they've cut the, the side, the bike path in half, and gone and started dredging down the back, I know that they were trying to connect to the north channel, and the north channel can't handle the flow of water, so they continue to start going to the south channel to try to dredge the water problem that they have down there. There's many issues down there that I can continue to talk about this evening, but I won't, I'll wait to refer this to a committee or two weeks, whatever my colleague wishes.
What committee?
I, I, I really believe that this should be sent to Government Operations and Public